I'm sorry, we will call the regular school board meeting of Citrus County, the November 2019 to order. My name is Thomas Kennedy, I'm chairman of the school board, and we have opening exercises by the honorable Douglas Dodd.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. So good afternoon, everyone. We've got business that we're going to take care of today, but before we get into that, we have some great information to share with everyone. We had a chance to celebrate our freedoms yesterday with Veterans Day, and we were involved with the Veterans Day Parade. We have so much to be thankful for in this country, living in a nation like New York. We should be very thankful for us in this district, and for this community and their support of our schools. And we have school advisory councils that we are all a part of, as school board members that we serve on school advisory councils. And I get the pleasure to serve on the council for the Full City Elementary School. And I experienced something that I really wanted to highlight with the board this year, with that group. We all have different schools, and maybe different personalities in the schools, and how the advisory councils work out. Full City, this group of students that are involved with the advisory council, I've been so impressed with their willingness to share, and to comment, and to ask questions. And the parents, too, there are some parents in the audience, and they're involved. And I think we all want to see parents get more active, and our school advisory council is a great way to do that. So Dr. Tara Wells, the principal of Full City, is here, and she has some of the SAC members that are going to share some words. But I want to turn it over, I would like Dr. Wells to come up to the podium, please. And also, we have some other members of the SAC here, and I know you probably mentioned that, too.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to first start out by thanking you very much for the opportunity to come here and share a little bit of our evening with you tonight. One of my favorite things to do in my role is to lead our school advisory council. And we have what I consider to be the very best school advisory council that I've ever been a part of. These young ladies and their families are wonderful. They come out to our meetings. Once a quarter, we have four meetings. They come prepared with questions, and suggestions, and ideas to make our school better. They're never afraid to ask the hard questions. They're never afraid to bring us suggestions to make our school better. And we attribute a lot of that to their parents, many of whom are here with us tonight. We have Mrs. Erin, and we have the Drummond family, and we have, let's see, this is Gabby Hamner's father and grandmother, and we have Mrs. Patrick here. So these families and parents are all very active on our committee as well. So today, they're going to take just a minute and express to you why they are thankful in the season of Thanksgiving, so if that's okay, they'll each just take a quick moment.
Hi, my name is Nari Patrick, a fifth grader, also attends Full City Elementary, also a participant in many of the extracurriculums that you sponsor at Full City Elementary. And for that, I'd like to thank you, the school board. Kids at Full City Elementary are grateful and thankful that we are able to participate in these events such as STEM, run club, NHS, State Futural, and field trips, but not limited to reading roundup, reading night, FSA night, PTO movie night, and science night, and many more. Kids are appreciative that they can be a part of these curriculums. Once again, thank you for supporting Full City Elementary's extracurriculums, and have a terrific evening.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Hamner, I'm in fifth grade. I'd like to say thank you for everything you do for the schools, especially Full City Elementary. Thank you for donating the iPads. It is a great help for the students. The iPads have an amazing program called iWrite. iWrite is a program that goes through what my peers and myself need at Full City Elementary. iWrite fills in the learning gaps on what Full City Elementary students need to be successful, as well as what the students need additional help with. Speaking of Full City Elementary, our school mascot is of the bullfrog, which is why we have hoodbooks, which is a great incentive for students to earn hoodbooks by demonstrating good behavior by following the rules and PBIS. When we earn hoodbooks, we can spend them at the school store or save them for bigger things like a hospital party or even bigger, principal for the day. Students enjoy following the rules so that they get to earn their PBIS celebration. Once again, the students and staff of Full City Elementary School, thank you and greatly appreciate what you do.
Hi, my name is Reagan Drummond, I'm in fourth grade and attend Full City Elementary School. Today, I would like to talk about our teachers. Some of our teachers have influenced and inspired kids, including me, to become a teacher someday. These teachers have qualities such as kindness, they make my peers and I feel special. Our teachers are supportive when they teach excitedly. For example, they show support by encouraging students to keep going when they don't know the answer. Our teachers make students feel special by awarding them when they succeed or do well. They also show kindness by taking time to answer my peers' questions and talking with them. Full City's teachers teach excitedly by presenting lessons expressively and in fun ways. All of these are reasons why teachers are so important, and also why I and several of my peers want to be teachers when we grow up. Thank you again.
Hello, my name is Emma Holly, I am a fourth grader at Full City Elementary School. I will be addressing school safety. Our school safety is important to teachers, but especially Deputy Anymore. He makes our school feel safe, we know he is there for our protection. We know this by his uniform, weapons, and namesake. His smile and his kindness helps make us feel able to talk to him about our feelings. We also know that he is willing to risk his life for ours. That may be his job, but that's how important we are to him. We have many different drills for our safety. One is a fire drill, we know to line up quickly and quietly in order to leave the building. Another one is Alice. Depending if it's alert, lockdown, inform, counter, or evacuate, which actions we will take. Thunderstorm drills are important because Florida has the most lightning strikes. As you can see, our school's safety is very important with the help of our teachers and Deputy Anymore. We will be ready if anything happens.
Hi, my name is Olivia Aaron, I am in Ms. Ryan's fifth grade class, and I would like to start off with one thing. As an FCE student, I would like to thank FCE's lunch staff, being Mr. Cole, Mr. Wong, Ms. Linda, and Ms. Jones. They're kind, helpful, and friendly to the students and adults at FCE. They bake their own cookies and make sure that the food they hand out is allergy-free. They help provide certain food and drinks in the share station so that students can get extras without having to pay for them. This helps students with little amounts of money on their accounts the most. Also, Mr. Cole participates in a lot of the extracurricular activities, helping provide food and drinks for the guests that come to the school. She is very helpful to the students who have little money on their accounts by letting the child's or children's parents know when they need more money for which. Thank you.
Alright, students, thank you. Great job, and I love it so much when you guys participate in SAC meeting and involve in the school. So I want to encourage you to keep doing that. It looks like you guys have something in bags, are you going to make the presentation?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm going to ask you guys, it's not right now, but we're going to have the pledge here in the end of the year, I'd like for you guys to lead us in the pledge. Before we do that, Justin Strickland is here from Crystal River Church of God to open us up in a word of prayer. Justin is a product of our school's district, what's going on with South Elementary that's preparing for La Canto schools, and his mom works here for the district, has a leadership and chair of office. And I've got a chance to know Justin at the working ministry, and Andre, the pastor there at Crystal River Church of God, they've got a great program going. So I asked Justin if he could come in and open us up in a word of prayer, and say if you were, if you'd like. So this is Justin Strickland.
Wow, how do you follow that? Are they bringing gifts, I'm sorry. Wasn't told there was going to be that.
We'll hear tomorrow.
Okay.
We take prayers.
Hey, we got plenty of those. Thank you, and sincerely thank you for the opportunity. Thank you Superintendent Hemel for the opportunity, and of course, all the board members, and my dear friend Douglas Dodd, thank you so much for the invitation. I do not take this moment lightly. I know that there are many other qualified individuals that could pray in this moment and share in this moment, so I understand the office that's here. I understand what you do, I understand what goes on, and I thank you for the opportunity. As Mr. Dodd said, I am the executive pastor at Crystal River Church of God. Basically, I get to operate and handle all the day-to-day operations at Crystal River. Crystal River is a church that believes in giving back to our community, and not only our community, but our school system, and that is the children within the school. We support the local elementary school, the middle school, and high school there in Crystal River, and we believe that that's an opportunity for us. That's not a duty, it's not a task, it's an opportunity. And we are thankful that we get to do that and make an impact in many children's lives. I want to say to you guys that I'm a product of the public school system, and that could be good or bad, I'm not sure. But I've had the opportunity to do many great things in my lifetime so far, and that's only 33 years. And had an opportunity to reach higher education in county, and there are many different opportunities for you. You don't have to worry that whatever you set your heart to, you can do it. If you have the dedication and you have the fortitude to stick it out, if you say, "I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do whatever it takes to do it," you can do it. And I believe that you have in front of you people that will stand behind you for that. I would like to take this opportunity, this evening, afternoon, whatever it is, at this moment, I've been talking long enough, it could be evening, and if you would, would you join me in prayer? Our gracious heavenly Father, I come before you as your humble servant, thankful for this opportunity, but also thankful for the people that stand before me. Father, I ask you that today, you would send your Holy Spirit upon them to make decisions that are beyond even their own understanding. Father, I thank you for the wisdom and education that sits in this room. I thank you for the many talents and skills that are before us, that, Lord, you have placed them in this office not by chance, but for divine purpose. Proverbs 22:6 says, "To raise up a child in the way that he should go, and when he is old, he shall never depart from it." Father, we understand that the decisions they make tonight are decisions that affect generations. Therefore, they are often difficult, they are often challenging, and may cause them to have to reflect on their own experiences and reflect on what the future may hold. Father, I pray that as they do the difficult, that you would do the impossible. I pray that you would open doors that no man can shut. I pray that the Citrus County School Board, that the Citrus County school system would be one that other systems can glean from, one that other places can take notice from, that they can learn from, that no one should be ashamed of what we have here. I pray that you would move on the faculty, the staff, that often the challenges outweigh the compensation. I pray that you would be on them, that you would give them the strength to endure and let them know that they're doing something more than just for compensation. They're doing something that will pay off with eternal rewards. Father, I ask all of this in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you, thank you very much.
If you want to just wait a minute, we would, let's all stand for the pledge, please, and our students from Full City, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the proceeding and justice for all.
Before we get going here, Superintendent, you had something that you wanted to just...
I just wanted to make it public that tomorrow one of our employees will be turning 50 years old, and I just wanted to...
In all my years, that was worth it, just to see her face. You know, one more thing, and I am going to embarrass somebody, but we have a great cause that's going on, FFA. The superintendent would be very upset if I didn't take an opportunity. We have an FFA fundraiser going on for Citrus High School, I believe? And Ms. Abby Wells, would you just get up real quick and come on, give us a quick commercial so that those who are interested?
Go ahead.
We want the video to be able to catch you.
My name is Abby Wells, and I am the reporter of the Citrus FFA. I'm not really prepared at all, but we started a new fundraiser today for not only our chapter, but for the whole ag program. And it's to help, we're starting new projects, like we got strawberries this week delivered. So we've been cleaning up the greenhouse, which is where the strawberries are planted, which it hasn't been done in a few years. There's a whole bunch of projects that we have in mind, but we don't quite have the funds for. So our new project is, or the new fundraiser, it's online, and it's like a subscription, I think, $10 a month or something, for three months, or you can do a year. So it's kind of like, right now in our class, it's a competition, who can get the most, and there's like incentives for who can get the most first, or I think, once you get to like 25, the students receive gift cards, so it's a competition throughout all the classes.
Awesome. And agriculture, is that kind of important in this country? Is that industry a big deal?
Yes, I've always kind of grown up, like, not in industry, but my grandparents have influenced me a lot, and it puts food on all of our plates. Who doesn't love food?
We appreciate it, thank you, thank you, Abby. And our FFA programs and the 4H programs in this county are really second to none, and we just, we support them, and so if you have it in your heart, reach out, there'll be some social media opportunities to do that. With that, we will move on to adopt the agenda, and the only request that I need to make is if we could pull off the consent agenda, item eight, which is the approval of the data sharing security agreement, and if we can just add that back on to the regular agenda.
Approval of the agenda with adding on, the consent for the data sharing?
A motion by Ms. Counsel, second by Ms. Ryan, to approve the agenda, adoption of the agenda, as recommended by the superintendent, adding back item eight. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I did have one question. Maybe I've got to get on to the electronic version. Is item... 15Q, was that on consent, or did that get... I was just looking on the printed copy they gave us. Is that on the... It's not on consent.
Yeah, it's on, it's on... Is that what you were looking for, for it to be?
So, okay, I thought that was, I reminded me of what I said, but I think, okay.
Yeah, 15Q, surplus property list. Mr. Dodd, is that the one?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on the regular agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Citizens' comments? There'll be another two opportunities, one at 5:15 and at the end of our regular business. Approve consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Powers to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Recognition of donations.
We have approved the $5,650 donation to the Campus Primary School from Sugar Millwood Rotary. Approve the $1,000 donation to Crystal River Middle School from Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $500 donation to Crystal River Middle School from John and Lisa Somerville. Approve the $1,000 donation to Embryus Middle School from Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $1,000 donation to La Canto Middle School from Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $830 donation to Citrus High School from Saginaw Rivers Hospital. Approve the $3,000 donation to Crystal River High School from Friends of the Pirate Band. Approve the donation of foam padding valued at $2,800 to Crystal River High School from Chuck Everett State Farm Insurance. Approve the $3,000 donation to Crystal River High School from the Phil Royal Legacy. Approve the $2,000 donation to Crystal River High School from the Kiwanis Club of Everness. Approve the $500 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Jennifer Harris. Approve the $500 donation to the Academy of Environmental Science from Centers Dermatology. Approve the $1,000 donation to WTC from the Academy of Environmental Science. Approve the $3,000 donation to WTC from the Rotary Club of Homosacks Springs Foundation. Approve the $500 donation to WTC from Fort Cooper Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution. And approve the $500 donation to WTC from Fort Cooper Daughters of America. That's two different donations. There's a total of $26,780.
Wow, thank you so much. We really appreciate to all of our community partners who have donated, that is a wonderful amount of commitment to our community. And with that, we will go on to item four, educational services, Dr. Hebert, and approval of the MOU between the Centers and Citrus County School Board.
I'm asking for approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Centers and Citrus County School Board. I have Ms. Humboldt here to answer any questions, provide additional information that you may need.
Good evening, Ms. Humboldt.
Good evening. This is an addition to what was before, except for... Yes, it's an addition to add La Canto High School as a regular recipient of mental health services.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, I'm glad we have the centers available for our schools, and you know, when I first read it, it included some of the expansions of La Canto that got corrected on the responsibilities part of this contract. You know, I do have some questions, though, about the future for the centers and with Livestream, and the issues with mental health counseling. We still don't have a contract with Livestream yet, do we?
Not yet.
And so we've got this MOU here with centers, but yet it's only for the La Canto school complex. So I just, you know, are they going to expand? I mean, the funding for this, when we deal so much with Livestream, and the public dollar going to Livestream, I just kind of want to know, what's, what are we looking forward to with the centers, what's coming down the road, and where is their funding coming from?
I can't say specifically where their funding is from, meaning the centers, because they're not our community-based provider any longer. They stepped up and stepped forward to provide services in the La Canto area because their offices are down that way, and felt like, you know, that they could service, just knowing that they, that one of their, or actually several of their counselors were seeing students from that area outside of the school system, and came forward and said, "We're willing to provide support in your schools," you know, "to elementary and middle." There's actually just one counselor that's coming, she comes five days a week, and their funding is based on their Medicaid billing or private insurance.
Private insurance, but yet they'd come for the board, so that they would allow students or who didn't qualify, that they would still take them, is that...
Absolutely, they have done that. They have kept every word and every part of that agreement that they set out to. We have, I believe it's 16 students, actually the elementary, 11 active students, 16 at the middle school, 16 students that are on a waiting list for referrals that have been turned in on La Canto Primary and La Canto Middle, and, excuse me, six students that are ready for mental health counseling at La Canto High School.
And why is Livestream, they picked that, they chose that, or what was our issue with Livestream on that?
The plan with Livestream is that, based on the Shine funding, with the Shine funding, our potential agreement with them is to have six mental health counselors to go through the, at the elementary. So that would mean two counselors per, or two schools per counselor, which really would leave one left over, that there would be the potential on, I mean, there's some different things that could be done. That one, if there were a high-needs elementary school, out of those six, one, you know, one could go there. We also have the money, I had to write myself some notes. We have additional money left, because we, as you all know, we were not able to hire the school psychologist. So with the leftover mental health allocation money, our plan would be to take that money and hire three additional mental health counselors that could be split up, very similar to what we're doing now, that would be Embryus Middle School, Citrus High School, Crystal River High School, Crystal River Middle. But Crystal River Middle and Crystal River High School, from one standpoint, gets a little bit more service because we have that contract with PACE, with the REACH program, where they counsel the girls in Crystal River Middle and Crystal River High School.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't want to, I'm not hoping to cut you off on what we are going to do, I'm talking about Livestream. I'm trying to get a grasp of Livestream and where the services are with Livestream. They'll still be coming in the La Canto complex.
That's correct.
Even though the centers are there, the centers are just optional, and they're using Medicaid and insurance funding in order to see the students. But yet, we don't have a counselor with Livestream yet, as of now, is that correct?
That's correct. The contract is, we're waiting, it was, we sent it, it's been through several phases, it was back to Livestream. Ms. Baird, one of their executives, was looking at it again today, you know, in terms of checking with everybody that she needed to check with, like the attorneys, to say, "Are we ready to move forward with this?" Jen Greco and I both expressed to her that our plan is, and our hope is, that we are able to take it to the December board meeting for approval.
And then when would that be? When will we see action? When would that be? Would it be January? We have counselors available or?
Um, I, I think in the perfect world, we would hope that they all are, but those people are going to have to be hired by Livestream because that's part of the agreement is the funding that we provide to them for each one of their counselors.
Right, well, I'm, I want to get counselors out there is what I'm saying. I mean, I, I still was, you know, a little confused in some ways. I know the convenience of the centers is why they're working in the Cantor Complex. And we don't have any indication that they're going to move to other schools, so they're doing it?
No. I, I can't say that they wouldn't or they wouldn't be interested.
But they could, right? As supplemental.
Correct.
Not as competitive, not competing with Livestream.
Mm-hmm.
Would you agree with that? Is that?
Yeah, and I, I don't really think there is a, a competition simply because Livestream is the community-based provider at this point. I think the centers is just willing to, they know what the need is and they're willing, they've just been willing to step up to the plate, you know, to help with the mental health counseling.
Ms. Humboldt, um, can you just review quickly again the numbers? Approximately how many students are we serving currently with the centers? And how many approximately are on the waiting list?
Eleven total, uh, elementary students. And some of those students are seen weekly, some bi-weekly. Locanto is sixteen students.
So we have about twenty-seven students and did I hear you say sixteen? There's a waiting list of sixteen?
Total of sixteen referrals waiting to be scheduled between Locanto Primary and Locanto Middle.
So we have twenty-seven being serviced, sixteen on a waiting list, and then this funding, uh, I'm sorry.
And there are six that are, are eligible and are waiting at Locanto High School.
Okay, so, and so, so, and an additional six. And I think, and I'm, Mr. Dodd, I don't need to speak for you, but I think I can appreciate the frustration, I think, is, and it's not directed at you, Ms. Humboldt. But this money was approved at the last legislative session. It's now going to be December here before we know, we're already going to be getting ready here for Thanksgiving. And we're, you know, we have an agreement, we've been waiting on. Once that's done, there's still a hiring process. I think we're probably not looking at realistically, it's going to be till the first of next year. We potentially could have ended the next session before we see the first counselor in the schools. And we've got one group, this is not the primary care, I mean, the primary, um, mental health provider. And, and I agree, Mr. Dodd, I'm, it's not that I think we wouldn't like them at other schools, but they've got sixteen kids on a waiting list plus six ready to go, and that's just at one campus. So that, I, I mean, in expressing frustration and it's, again, it's not your department, it's where, we, I think we're going to need in December, and board members, you correct me if I'm wrong in this, I think we need somebody from, from Livestream to come forward and talk to us in December if it's not on the agenda. We need to know where, where we're at. But I think Wes has turned it back over, have you done?
Yeah, we've.
Is that, he's done on, on the last?
Finished and it's been turned back over to Livestream and that's, was several weeks ago and we're waiting on that.
But in defense of Livestream also, that contract's been handed to us, back to them, back to us, and back to them. So it's a contract that's been going back and forth. Livestream wants a counselor for the school system. And they have also talked us about even from the Shine money, if it was to go away, they've still talked up a counselor for the school. So it's one of those processes that's intended to take place. And the other issue is going to be if they can even find people to put in those positions. So it's not like anyone has sat back and just waited and waited and just thinks and thought that.
And I agree with that, except I think this is our second MOU with the centers in the meantime. And we've already got, we've got counselors in there from the centers and we're still waiting for, for Livestream on this. So I, I'm, 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 I would like somebody from Livestream to let us know what's going on.
And just so you're aware, we, when, when we received the Shine allocation, we did tell Livestream, we had a conference call with them, we've had multiple calls with them to let them know, "You need to get the counselors ready because as soon as the MOU is signed, we want those counselors in the schools." So we have, we have, on our part, as far as Citrus County schools, have informed them of everything we need. We've indicated the cost, we've, we've talked through all that. We're just in the process of working out the logistics of, of the paperwork of it going back and forth. So we are ready, our, our schools, we've notified the principals to have a spot ready for them. I mean, on our end, I feel like we've done everything we can do to welcome them into our school system and, and partner with them. It's just a matter of once the paperwork's signed. But I do know, as Mrs. Himmel was shared, there are concerns about being able to find enough counselors to, to work in these positions. As we've seen with instructional staff, they're, I think, having difficulties in the mental health board as well, so.
I think next week, if you and I ever need you to agree something else, Livestream should be at some different place.
The continuum meeting, mm-hmm.
But the irony is, the centers are providing it without community funding. So I just think of all of our other students and needs that are out there that, um, you know, I'm going to give it the ball rolling, get counselors for those mental health issues that we're dealing with today. And, you know, and again, it's not, I agree in a lot of ways with Mr. Kennedy, it's, it's not meant that, it's not directed at you, but it's, it's this process that we need to continue to move on and, um, I'm just not real happy with what's happened so far.
I understand.
And I have had my three questions answered in this discussion. And I do have one scrip there on page three, um, under four, general provisions, look at number forty-three. There's a no at the beginning of that paragraph and it has, I don't know why it's there.
I don't have the, um, the contract in front. Are you talking about with the centers?
Yeah, it was probably something that was left over if it was, if it was a redo of the thing that it's.
It probably isn't hired the centers.
Just the word no means, I don't know, it, it doesn't belong, which is mean.
Well, that means, no, I think it does, it says no, none of their staff will.
No centers be paid, yeah. Oh, they just did the, the centers.
I, I think that's. That's their title.
And I do share the question, one of my questions was if the other schools could provide transportation to the Locanto complex. Could other students be served, but not with these numbers, I don't know.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the MOU between the school board and the centers.
Motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Powers to approve of revision, I'm sorry, approval of revised MOU between the Centers and Citrus County School Board. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. And next up is item six.
Requesting approval of the contract with Connection Therapy Services, and I have Mrs. Kirby here to answer any questions or provide information for you.
Good evening, Ms. Kirby.
The Connections Therapy Services is going to be with a, a, actually an individual who has LLC to provide two days a week of speech-language services to supplement what we're providing in our schools.
Someone in Congress has slash, is speech-language slash occupational physical therapy? And it really doesn't mean that.
And the reason, correct, in this case, she has just speech, speech and language therapy, but it is the same general contract that we use for all of those therapy services. So in this case, she's focused specifically on speech-language services.
Someone would like to make a motion?
I move to approve the contract with Connection Therapy Services LLC.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Counts to approve the contract with Connection Therapy Services LLC. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Happy Hands.
I request approval of the contract with Happy Hands. I also have Mrs. Kirby here to provide any additional information.
Now, and this is actually for an interpreting service. We, um, have one teacher that is a teacher of the deaf and hard of hearing and we have actually two interpreters on staff. There was a time about ten years ago, we had about ten interpreters and it's just the number of students that we have and it's just through natural attrition that they are, the other interpreters are no longer with us. Right now, we're blessed that we have exactly two students that require interpreting, so we are in a good place. But this gal is actually a local, um, highly qualified with nat-, with national and medical certifications. She can actually, um, provide interpreting services in legal rounds and court cases, as well as in medical cases in Chatham, Florida City. And so it seemed worthwhile and reasonable to us to have a separate contract with her. What we had currently been doing for those emergency situations has been reaching out to a group out of Pasco County. And so that takes them an additional hour and a half just to get here. Boy, this gal is phenomenal and she's in Florida City and is just right in our own backyard. So she's not interested in being a direct hire right now, but she would be happy to do it on an as-needed basis. And so that's why we're reaching out. As far as budget, we actually took money from the budget that we have with the group in Pasco County. It's already has budgeted and we just moved the budget to her, um, contract as well, split it between the two. Very good fortune, very good fortune.
Legal for the contract with Happy Hands LLC to provide, uh, instructions with CCSB and information.
Motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Powers to approve the contract with Happy Hands LLC. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are moving on to item eight, which was taken off the consent agenda. And Dr. Hebert, did you want to introduce our, Ms. Amy Cryer and my shooter? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Suzie, I'm sorry.
Hey, I'll be at you if you want me to be at you.
I'm so sorry.
Good afternoon, I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Counts to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any questions or comments?
Now, we're working.
Working hard.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Now I apologize, item eight. Uh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, miss, it, it, item eight, we added one item in there.
I'd like to ask for approval of the data sharing and security agreement. Before you do that, I'd ask, um, we have Mr. Patrick Simon, who is a former director of research accountability, to be here, as well as Mr. Derek Bittner, who is our IB coordinator, um, working alongside Amy Cryer, who is our current director of research accountability. So I've asked them to come and share kind of a little overview of what this document is and answer any questions you may have. Mr. Simon?
Mr. Simon, it's a pleasure to see you again. We haven't seen you in a while, have you been doing anything?
But I will tell you, it's, it's interesting how you can fit back in this saddle very comfortably, even after a long hiatus. I'm here on behalf of the Citrus County Coalition for College and Careers. This nonprofit organization has a focus to provide opportunities for students as they progress from high school to life after high school. That includes support for students as they progress into the military, into jobs, into our technical schools, particularly WTC Technical College, into our colleges, particularly CF, into all the universities, public, private, state universities in Florida. We are in the schools every week. Right now, we're servicing around seventy-two students. I know Mr. Goolsby and Ms. Mason see us on every Monday, except for this past Monday, and it has been a great joy to be supportive. Our presence here today is, comes from experience of noticing what's happening with our students in reference to the free application for federal student aid referred to as FAFSA. Our goal, and we are identified by the Florida College Access Network as Citrus County's local college access network. Our goal is to have really 100% of the students in the senior class complete the financial aid application, often referred to as Pell Grant or loan scholarships. Even though we know students may be, may not be looking at college, but we know that they be going, they may be going to some training provided by different organizations that can be eligible for Pell Grants. We know that students may have parents who are both physicians, but who knows what may happen in two to four years that may change their lives and that application should begin at the end of their high school year. So we are in the schools helping with that. We noticed this past year that of this 135 Citrus County schools, last year that filled out the FAFSA application, about twenty-seven were incomplete or errors. So those students lost the opportunity to receive the 6,000, potential $6,195 to pay for their extended learning after high school. For a student going to CF, that would be complete cost for one year. So what we've pursued, and I am so grateful to Derek Bittner, I will tell you, of the many people that I had the honor to work side by side in Citrus County, Derek really does exemplify the commitment and the willingness to do whatever it is to serve our students and to be partners with our staff and administrators.
Here, here.
He offered, he offered to, to facilitate a data management system that is controlled by the Florida Department of Education and is partnered with the federal government. And this is the database that students submit very confidential information regarding income that determines the Pell Grant award. The state says we will offer any school district in Florida, information and access to this tool that will help us know which students have completed and submitted their FAFSA, which of them have completed it but left parts blank or error, or which ones are started and never even touched after a short period of time. So Derek offered to be the agent of Citrus County to monitor that, to provide all that information to all of the high schools and to our technical college and to our community college in Citrus County, to let us know the progress and to let students know if there's an omission so they do not lose the opportunity for that grant. That involves a contract with a district, it involves an agreement by you as board members, it involves a superintendent and our legal advisor, thank you, Mr. Brad Toh, who's always there to help with these projects, and it would involve Derek going to a training with the Department of Education to manage this tool that he's doing on his free time. So again, that summarizes the context of this contract. I am thankful to all of you and I will tell you that as I'm in the schools, our students in our high schools that we meet are amazing young people. That gives me personally great hope for tomorrow. Our staff are working endlessly. Our counselors are so dedicated to ensuring that the students have an option when May comes and graduation day, particularly seniors.
Board members, do you have any questions?
Well, this one made a contact and a friend of mine, because at college level, which we talked about, so many kids didn't finish what they're supposed to do, but they lost hundreds of thousands of dollars and he had to just jump on and just follow them like they're following everyone, like Derek did. And by the way, I think in the dictionary, when you look up the word remarkable, it says Derek Bittner.
Here, here, I would agree. I would agree, and you're right, Mrs. Powers, we have many students who, this application is very complex because they may be living with a family member and they're, who is, who is actually the guardian? Are they independent or are they dependent? So we are very fortunate to be partnered with CF to do that. I'll leave you with also one last comment. Our, our organization this year will be awarding 20 $1,000 scholarships to the students in Citrus County, three high schools, with hope that that helps them in addition to all the other resources they're getting to get to the next place. other resources they're getting to get to the next place.
Mr. Chairman, you have, I know you go to the schools, you go hall of kids, but is it, is the Y helping with some of these students?
Yes, the Y is our partner.
To give them some recognition.
Absolutely. The YMCA is our partner in many activities, and actually, we are hand in hand, side by side. They provide space, they provide resources, individuals, they did a two-day, supported a two-day summer camp for students in preparation for college, technical school, universities, and they also, part of their youth development committee provides any resources we need, or help, or volunteers, so they are really integral in this. And there are several partners, CF, our educational foundation, Shonda, has offered us to utilize foundation as a, as a mechanism to forward the funds. We will use the same process that the foundation does to forward the funds to universities and colleges. So, yes, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, George, for not retiring.
Different kind of retirement.
Mr. Simon, while this is already the right thing to do for kids, what's the incentivization, the incentivizing for the school district? Because when students fill out the FAFSA, it has a positive domino effect, and I think that has some impact in a positive way to us, but what might that look like?
There are a couple. One, this school's part of the school grade, the graduation rate, it gives a motivation to the student for purpose for finishing school, for meeting the requirements for graduation, whether it be passing a Concordan ACT or SAT test, or their language arts, or just completing their coursework to get the credits needed. It also is part of the Department of Education's database where they have information on every school district regarding the percent of students who progress from high school to a technical college, community college, university. That data Amy accesses and provides to our district services staff and to the superintendent team. It also, in essence, if you ask in the broader context of it all, it's the workforce, the economy, and students now have opportunity for purpose. We assist students who are, we want to make sure ultimately, Mrs. Himmel, that every student who is graduating knows exactly what they're going to do and where they're going to be the day after graduation, whether it be a job, or enrollment, or involvement into our military, or to some learning center to help them get to the next place. Those students should be there wondering to themselves, what shall I do? So yes, I think it is, it is in a pretty idealistic perspective. Our goal is to make sure every student contributes to our society, particularly our community.
Mr. Simon, is there some red shirt person helping?
We're not quite sure. We did not get a release from his parents.
Oh, okay.
So if you do find out who that is, and I think what we're referencing, referencing is our chairman or our board there.
And you know, before we vote, would you just, a couple of people who are sitting on your board, because we've, you've got an amazing board, and I don't mean that to be, including the red shirt person, but they, but you have, you have assembled an amazing team.
We do have, we have Trish Thomas, who retired and decided to serve on our board. Amy Crowell, who is, serves as part liaison for the district. We have Derek Bittner, whose knowledge is incredible and helps us and guides us. We have Vernon Lauter and his cohort, Rebecca York Alcorn, who is CF advisor, she's on our board. Dr. Tim Brandt. Dr. Tim Brandt is an agent who is guiding us with financial resources so that we make no effort to do fundraising. He facilitates that in order to meet the needs of any and every student in any situation and any need. So he's on our board. Mr. Kennedy is on our board, and again, guides us, Janet Mulligan, serves on our board in her role of previous life guidance counselor and school administrator. Who am I missing?
Dr. Parek.
Oh, Dr. Parek. Dr. Parek, whose children went to Citrus County schools, and he felt the need, he wanted to give back, and he also felt effort to help focus and support those students who are looking for careers or education into the health and medicine area. So he helps in that way. I have everyone.
We have a leader who was sought after by multiple Fortune 500 companies after retirement, but decided to put his energies in Citrus County. So with that, thank you. Is there any questions? I think we still need a motion. I just need a motion.
I'm going to approve the data sharing plan.
Security.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Powers, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve, yeah, I'm just looking, to approve the data, the data sharing security agreement. Any questions or comments? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. And we have a 501, but we can keep going.
Good afternoon, evening. I am here to request approval of the surplus list as of September 30th, 2019. This was pulled because we are removing items 064814, a '97 Golf Club Car, and item number 064821, a 2007 Golf Club Car.
So we just need then a motion removing those items. Is that correct?
Motion to approve the surplus property list for the deletion of the items, just the two Golf Club Cars. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the surplus property list, removing the two Club Golf Cars. Any questions or comments?
Just for clarification, that's because those were not lost or stolen, they've been located, I guess there was an explanation.
Yeah, they have been located. The BPI, thanks, Mom. The BPI numbers, actually the ones that she mentioned are not, the BPI numbers on the two cars, but the serial numbers match the two missing cars. So they were not, one of them was not there at the time of the inventory. Actually, it was the beautiful black and gold one because we sent it to WTC to be painted. So it was not on campus for a little while, and then we actually had to send it out for repair as well. So I believe that was missed because of the time it was not there. The other one is used daily by our custodial staff. But again, the serial number and the BPI number that was on the car did not match. We have a new person in place, a new technology specialist. He's doing a great job. This was his first go-around with the inventory, and he's found quite a few holes, and we're putting some systems in place to ensure a proper inventory as we move forward. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All of us in...
I feel like your lunch cart could pass along.
Yeah, the lunch cart's pretty cool.
I do want to clarify, the serial numbers did match. The, I just wanted to clarify that.
It was just our internal numbers.
The tag number, those numbers that I read to you are the original tag numbers. Those are those old gold, and when we went and started the scanning, we couldn't go back that far in the numbers, so the scan number is different than this number, so. But the serial number, which actually identifies it, they did match.
Correct.
Yes. One of them is like worn off, it's a sticker, it's not an actual serial number, but everything we can see matches, with the exception of like a rubbed off spot, so.
Okay. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
All right. I ask for approval of Budget Amendment Number One, which is amended as of September 30th, 2019.
Request approval of Budget Amendment Number One, amended September 2019. Second.
Motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Budget Amendment Number One, amended September 2019. Any questions or comments? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. On, sir.
Yeah. Let's go ahead, and if we can just, I'm going to just recess our regular meeting. I'm going to open the, I'm sorry, the, the public hearing portion. I have to wait 60 seconds? Okay. This is true. They could come right through the gates. It, and the, we'll be doing the approval of the 2019, 2020 school improvement plans, and then followed by that by the final five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board.
Mr. Kennedy, I know we got a minute, but just...
You go right ahead.
One order here, I know. We haven't been doing the electronic voting today, and is that, are we in the works to have that back up?
I think what we talked about, and we had gotten some input from legal, was that we could continue and probably should continue to do what we've done. It's been our practice, and that is to verbally vote, and then, then Ms. Adele will go back in and insert our votes. One, it helps with the rhythm of, I think, our meetings, but the other point was that it actually was less of a technology issue that we were having, and we were having some glitches with that, particularly with the scoreboard, which is really kind of cool if you track it on there. And so it was impacting some of that, that piece of it. So Mr. Bradshaw indicated if we just continue with the verbal voting, and Ms. Adele felt like she could then just insert those votes pretty conveniently afterwards. Great question. Okay, now it's 501, and approval of the school improvement plans. Oh, Ms. Douglas, happy birthday. You are still younger than me, though.
You're a lot younger than me.
I am requesting approval for the 19, 2019, 2020 school improvement plans.
Board members, we just need a motion.
Approval of the 2019, 2020 school improvement plans. Second.
Motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the 2019, 2020 school improvement plans. Let me just pause to ask if anyone is wishing to come forward to vote, I mean, to give public comment on the plans? Anybody wishing to come forward to speak on the school improvement plans? Last call. Board members, did you have any questions or comments?
Just comments, I read several of them, and quite a monumental, aspirate administrators and staff of these schools did support. It's phenomenal. And the reports also show these communications of where things need to be focused on, improved for student behavior and absenteeism. And I talked with Ken, and she said, y'all are already there, you're focusing on that improvement right now. So it's very, sort of shocking that first and second grade were always hitting such a problem, but that's what it was.
We followed a new process this year, and we met three times over the summer, and then leadership teams also met with their SAC council, and of course, board members were also involved in that process.
Ms. Douglas, I know you have been spearheading that and doing that, and it's really, you can see the proof is in the pudding there. So thank you very much. The other thing I want to just comment, we had Floridacity, Mr. Dodd brought Floridacity's students here today. What a model. The school improvement plans come out of also having input and approval through each of the school advisory councils, and again, it was just a model of seeing that in our schools. So I appreciate it.
And you know, too, the elementary schools don't have to have, aren't required to have student members. They actually, the members of the elementary school aren't allowed to vote, but yet, they're still involved, which I appreciate, and I think that's...
We have a couple of kids at Forest Ridge that just tend to be vocal and vote anyway. We just don't count it.
The, the input of our, of our students is critical, and that, their role in that process, I do think it plays a vital role. That's really why we're all here. So.
You know, when I was reading all of these, I was thinking, you know, how school used to be, and how you had to hire a teacher for them in the classroom, a teacher taught, that, that's what it was. Really do that, it's more like building a rocket ship to go to Venus. It is so complicated, but I wish everyone could read and see just how complicated, how this world out that you do.
If you, they're all online.
I don't think we have that many volunteers, but if you could, please do, because it is very, very complicated.
Anything else? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. And we have the final five-year work plan.
You all have your scripts? You do?
Oh, I'm sorry. The purpose of this meeting is to adopt the five-year work plan for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board as the five-year work plan proposed for the 2019, 2020 fiscal school year? Anyone wishing to come forward? Last call. Is there a motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year?
I'm moved to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
Second.
Linda Powers moved, and Ginger Bryant seconded the motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the 2000, I'm sorry, of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to adopt the final proposed five-year work plan as the final adopted five-year work plan of the Citrus County School Board for the 2019, 2020 fiscal school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero. Is there anything else on that?
Well, just speaking for Mr. Dixon at our lunch party, we did finally delete the Hall River Bridge as a five-year work plan. Wait a minute.
There's one.
That one off, one off of it.
First we play to see that.
We're waiting on Highway 19 down there.
With that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and what I'd like to do, if it's okay, is take a break, and if we could come back at 5:15 when we have public comment.
We start the recovery.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm, I'm recess, I'm sorry, I'm going to continue to recess our regular board meeting till 5:15.
During the public.
During the public.
We're done. Take it up next week.